Last night, my day.
Nice seeing you. Thanks for sending it around.
What is true?
No, I don't think I got that.
You can talk to Christie a little bit.
Okay. Okay, yeah. I just, yeah, processing all of that.
Looked at my email, but not right before.
I'm looking to read the Encyclopedia Britannica in that email. We can talk about it before we decide.
Creepy stalker stuff, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
A wayfinding is a sign that says the vic's that way, the office wire's that way.
Mm-hmm. And then more shopping up towards Moonlight.
Right, sure.
It'll direct you in.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
Trying to get that.
Figure out what I'm doing with that thing.
Stalker app where it ended up.
Oh, okay.
I was gonna say, I would be in. Currently.
When they get it, get, got there, when they leave.
This is like pre-annexation agreement from 2016 for the SHUI.
I don't know. I mean, I know there's a stalker web.
The reasoning why we're doing it. I think it's SHUI, but.
I have heard of that.
I know, I was, can I stop working November and December?
I know.
MD.
Right. So like this person has come by 14 times, whatever that.
When does that become like obstruction?
I'll, I'll like a break.
I don't know, that line's been crossed, but I don't know, it's up to. Not necessarily to say that.
If it's there, she'll find it. Especially well, but other people will too. But they just do it in a professional.
I was also just like.
You don't know how to pronounce that? Oh, my gosh, that's just so embarrassing. I can't even.
No way you would pronounce it as ovary though, right? That would be crazy.
Okay, I have six o'clock. If everyone would please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Christie, could you take a roll call, please?
Sure. Crittelli?
Present.
Martin?
Here.
Nakorado?
Here.
Fontana?
Here.
Pappenforth?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Mayor Shore?
Here.
Aquorum is present.
And we're going to do something a little different going forward with the civility invocation. We are still, we will continue to post it, but rather than reading it, it's there for everyone to see. And it's really our intention to, as we communicate amongst ourselves and with the public, to really hold ourselves to these standards. So it's there for everyone to read at their leisure. Next up, we have the consent agenda. Do we have any questions or comments on anything on the consent agenda this evening?
Mr. Mayor, I move to combine and approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Oh, hold on, hold on.
Hold on, sorry.
Oh.
I need, if you could please approve the consents calendar with the addition that number six will be amended pursuant to approval with the city attorney, because I have not reviewed that contract and I just saw it in the packet.
Okay, I'm sorry, amended pursuant to?
Attorney review.
Attorney review and potential amendment for legal items. I won't change it substantively, but I, you know, there's legal items that I might edit from what you see in your packet.
Okay, okay.
Shall I try it again?
Sure.
I'd like to combine and approve the consent agenda with number six, subject to attorney updates and changes.
Second.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Pappenforth, seconded by Councilmember Fontana. And the motion is to combine and approve the items on the consent agenda with the amendment where item number six will be pursuant to attorney review. Further discussion?
Stevens?
Yes.
Crittelli?
Yes.
Nakorado?
Yes.
Fontana?
Yes.
Pappenforth?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And that will bring us to citizen comment. Thank you, Christie. Okay. And first up, Floyd Rivano.
Hi there. My name is Floyd Rivano. I'm kind of a new face to the city council meetings, and that influences both of the things I wanted to mention today. First of all, Councilmember Fontana, I might be misremembering. I'm not sure, I wasn't aware of when you were appointed to the council, but I believe you might be a new member. And you ask a lot of, I don't know how to say this without sounding possibly offensive, very basic info questions that are really helpful for someone who's new to the scene. And I wanted to, I appreciate that, thank you. Second of all, I would like to make a suggestion. I would really appreciate if, when well-known speakers in the area come up to the stand, regardless of how popular in the city they might be, to introduce them with name and maybe position. For example, Amy Tahanovich and Zek Papp have both come up to this podium to speak, and I've had to get their names after the meeting. I know that we are a very community-oriented city, and I feel like acknowledging who each person is would allow someone who's new to the community to integrate a little bit easier. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Jim Wilson?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Shore and council members. This is the first time I've done this. Of all the things I've done, I've never done this before.
Welcome.
For any of you who do not know me, I'm Jim Wilson, former superintendent of schools here for nine years, former state representative. My wife and I have lived here with our family for over 27 years. And you should be relieved that tonight I am not going to request anything that involves a variance, a resolution, or paid parking.
Thank you.
My, my concern is S Mountain being closed, the gate being closed on S Mountain. It's closed to everyone except hikers and bikers. Hikers and bikers can go by there, as well as the runners up S Mountain during FIBAR. My family has had a tradition of driving family members and guests that would visit with us here up S Mountain, looking at Salida at night. It's an amazing view. If you have not been there, you should go there, but you can't go through the gate right now. The Edmund Oklahoma Group this year, they bring about 75 students and sponsors up and help with our Vacation Bible School each year, and they just happen to be the group that was the last one that painted the S on S Mountain as a service project. They do service projects while they're here. They wanted to take the students up because they rotate through, couldn't do it. So even the group that painted the S were not allowed to get up there. I asked Mayor Shore about the closure, and this may be one of the first times anyone's ever disagreed with our mayor. But I, he said that I should talk to a bunch of people, get a people, a bunch of people to write letters, get a bunch of people to come to council meeting, and as elected official, I said, no, I disagree with that. You know, you really don't need that.
It's not the first time I've been disagreed with that.
You really don't need that. At the Capitol, I didn't look forward to a whole bunch of people showing up to pitchforks and shovels. I could take care of that a lot easier sooner than that. So this is an issue that can really be resolved rather simply, I believe, without getting people all riled up. Mayor Shore said that Kevin Nelson actually graded the road at one time. It's another one of the amazing things that Kevin did for this community that people didn't realize. And I'm sure there are other people who can run a grader, so that's not an issue. Mayor Shore is also indicating to me that maybe it's a liability issue. Well, it hadn't been for decades before. It hasn't been for the bikers and hikers that still go up there, and it's certainly not for the people that run up that S Mountain on FIBAR, even though they probably sign waivers that aren't worth the paper they're written on when it comes to liabilities, you and I all know. So I'm just simply asking that S Mountain be opened up as it has been for decades. And one of the things that I did find was in visiting with Chief Johnson, said that the police used to unlock the gate in the mornings and then lock it at night. Well, you could put a timer on a gate and take care of that as well, as far as that goes. So, again, I just simply ask that S Mountain be open to the public, to people that are senior citizens, that may be mobility impaired. I thought it was ironic that I parked by the handicap spot out here, and there's a plaque on the wall of the council chamber that says, "Keep it free, think of me." And I thought if that gentleman tried to go up S Mountain, he'd have to stop at the gate. Would not be able to go up. That's, that's just not right. So I hope something can be done about that. You have my number, Mayor Shore.
I do, Jim. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming. Anyone online? Okay. All right, very good. Then we'll move on to ordinance 2024-12, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Salida, Colorado, amending Chapter 11 of the Salida Municipal Code regarding construction and excavation in the streets, sidewalks, and public property to establish a procedure for the undergrounding of utility facilities. This is a second reading and a public hearing. I will hereby open the public hearing, and I'll turn it over to David Lady to make his report.
Thank you. Just as a recap for this ordinance, it is something that pertains to communication and cable companies, whatnot, serving the city. And even though the code had some language as far as new construction and the undergrounding, there was a lot of language that was lacking in this, more or less fills in some gaps on when it's required and what's, who's required to do the work, that sort of thing. So glad to answer any questions you have.
Questions?
Pretty straightforward. Thanks for tightening up our code.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I move to.
Oh, it's a public hearing. Yeah, public hearing. Very good. Any, anyone signed up for public comment? Okay. No one sign, anyone online? No, okay. No need for rebuttal. Does council have any questions of anyone who has spoken? The answer to that would be no. I will hereby close the public hearing, and we'll open it up to preliminary council discussion. Now.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 2024-12 on second reading.
Second.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Crittelli, seconded by Councilmember Pappenforth, and the motion is to approve ordinance 2024-12 on second reading. Further discussion? Okay.
Nakorado?
Yes.
Pappenforth?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Fontana?
Yes.
Crittelli?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. And that brings us to New Business Resolution 2024-45, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Salida, Colorado, approving the Shaken Roost major subdivision. This is a public hearing, and I am remiss in that I forgot to mention before public comment, but it holds with this one as well. When we get to public comment, there is a three-minute time limit, and I will be enforcing that strictly. If anyone feels like they didn't get enough time, feel free to reach out to me after the meeting. But tonight it'll be three minutes. Okay? So I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing, and I will turn it over. And it's great to see you in here. Thanks, Glenn.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Glenn Van Nieuwwagen, Associate Planner, and I'll be presenting this action tonight. This is a major subdivision, and therefore it's a major impact review, which requires a public hearing and a recommendation from your planning commission, and that occurred on July 9th. And then ultimately, you approve it after a public hearing through the resolution, and it gets finally adopted or not adopted, whatever the case is. So that's where we're at tonight, your portion of the process.
Is it moving?
It's not advancing for me, Christie.
Try it now.
It's on purpose, sure.
Okay, I'll do it.
Okay, this is where the site's located. It's on the south side of Illinois, between Milford Street and Teller Street. It's located around some very public facilities, namely our high school and junior high school, and I think there's an early education center, as well as, I believe, the Salida Apartments are catty corner to the site. It is Zone C1, as you can tell, and it is an allowed use in the C1 district. Okay. So you looked at this originally back still this year, on March 18th of 2024, in the conceptual review with the planning commission. It was a little bit different project at that time, and I'll go through some of those changes. As I mentioned, duplexes are allowed per our code with a limited impact review, which would be a review by the planning commission only, and then appeal to city council. But in this case, because we're talking about 14 lots, it's a major subdivision, they're going through a much more robust process through the major impact review. So from here, basically, if council gives approval, there's a subdivision improvement agreement that we'll bring forward to you, but the ultimate development of the duplexes on the lots would be an administrative via staff review process. So that's kind of where the major subdivision takes precedent over the requirement of a limited impact review. I wanted to show you your future land use map that was adopted August 15th of 2023. Even though the site was Zone C1, they are recommending high-efficiency residential on this site, which is exactly what the applicant is proposing. Next, please. As I mentioned, this is different than what you saw back last March. And really, the big difference is they were front-loading all the units and getting access directly off of Illinois and Teller Street in that case. I believe staff worked with them to come up with a much better design, which is to re-load these lots and units with access off a private driveway that is totally on their site. So this does a lot of things. It, it takes away the garage facade for kind of narrow units. You don't want your unit to just look like a garage. It also helps pedestrians move around the site because they're not crossing driveways, and it puts traffic only in two locations onto the local street. So staff believes it's a much better design than what you initially looked at. There are inclusionary housing development standards that come in place. In this case, they will be building two units within the project that will be affordable. And the planning commission added a condition that that occur, or one of those units occur before the sixth unit is under construction. So they're not going to be waiting till the last to build the affordable units. They'll be right in the middle. And that, I think, worked right into the plan for the developer, who can talk a little bit more about that. There is a little bit left over that is a fee in lieu. There's a, basically a third of a unit that they will have to pay prior to development, that third share of what the fee in lieu would be. Now, because they are building affordable units, they are afforded some incentives that the code allows. They were able to reduce the size of the lots from 2,800 square feet to 2,500 and increase the coverage, or the amount the building could actually cover those lots from 60% up to 66%. So it's good to see the incentives we build in the code is working, and you're getting a higher density and a better product, and hopefully something more affordable. We had a number of issues with Excel Energy when we went to planning commission.
Who hasn't?
I'm not gonna comment on that. They asked for a number of public utility easements. This is a little bit more complicated in that there's actually an overhead line that's in place and transformers. The applicant has done a good job in working with them and coming up with something that I think is a little bit more reasonable. They are providing a little bit larger of an easement on the south side of the site and a 10-foot PUE running along Teller Street. So I think we've resolved the Excel Energy issues at this point, which were still kind of pending when we went to the planning commission. Okay, Christie. Staff added this in. Just to clarify, in this case, the lot lines include this accessway. So when you talk about a rear yard setback, in this case, it's only five feet, we want to make sure that somebody doesn't feel they can build a unit within that driveway. And specifically, you should set back from that driveway so you can get some visibility coming in, in and out of a garage in the alley. So you'll see something maybe a little unusual. We asked kind of a typical setbacks be shown on the subdivision plat, and that's included in your resolution? Okay. Christie, next. And the next step is the subdivision improvement and the housing agreement. And there, we'll get into the details of how this project's gonna meet the inclusionary housing units, how that fee in lieu is, how much it is, and how much, when it's gonna be paid. There's a fee in lieu for the fair contributions to schools, for open space. And then kind of the guts of the subdivision improvement is, there's public improvements that are part of this project, not so great in this case because they are taking advantage of the adjacent roads. They are doing some repaving of the roads, and they're building curb gutter and sidewalk around the perimeter. So we'll lay that out, how much it costs, and they provide a guarantee in that subdivision agreement. Okay. You're gonna hear some concerns from a neighbor about this project in relation to their property. And I wanted to kind of point out what is happening with this site. So the subdivision you're reviewing tonight is surrounded by this red line. That's the boundary of the Shaken Roost subdivision. The private accessways are what shows up here is kind of yellow. That's all on their site, and that is owned by the various owners and will be maintained by the various owners. Then there's the retention basin, all the stormwater parks itself in that retention basin. And then the Shields property is directly south of it. The two don't overlap. There is some discussion about what is shown on the plat as a, an alleyway that is south of the site. And the surveyor pointed out that the alleyway was not shown in the original Robards subdivision, but he reviewed a bunch of deeds, did give reference to that. So he drew a line that shows a 20-foot alleyway south of this project. But again, that is something that is foggy, and at the end of the day, it's not a part of the subdivision, and it doesn't affect how this project is being developed and proposed to you this evening. So I think that neighbor will raise some questions. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I think the applicant would give you some background on that as well. Okay. So we, staff is.
It's a public hearing, so we're not, we're not.
Okay.
Yeah.
When you're ready, after your public hearing, we have the proposed motion.
Any questions at all for Glenn at this point? Thanks. Thanks. And the applicant I take is with us. This is great. If you wouldn't mind coming up, that'd be great.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Go ahead and introduce yourself.
I'm Joni Baker.
I'm Erin Perouse.
I'm Jamie Baker.
And I'm Nathan Curtis, their engineer.
And if you have any opening remarks, you don't have to, it's.
I think the only thing that I would add, if, when you're looking at this, I can't see the numbers, but the, the last two lots that will face Teller on the south side of the parcel are our intended inclusionary housing. Thanks, Erin. His eyes are better than mine. So our intent is to start on the corner of Illinois and Teller with the first duplex. The next phase of the project would be the additional two duplexes on Teller, making the fifth and sixth unit inclusionary.
Thanks. Awesome. Any, any questions before we move on to public comment?
So your inclusionary units there, are you renting those?
It's our understanding that the determination on those being sold or rented is based upon what we do with the rest of the units. So we have been told by the planning commission that if we sell 50% and keep 50%, then one inclusionary would have to be sold and one would be rented. Our intent is to sell a majority and therefore sell the inclusionary units.
There'll be further opportunity in a minute or two, but it doesn't sound like there's any more questions at this point, so you're welcome. Take a seat. And do we have anyone signed up for, let's see, for public comment? No one signed up for anyone online? Okay. Very good then. There, it's now the applicant's opportunity to offer rebuttal, but I don't know what you'd rebut, so unless there's something burning you have, you'd like to say? Okay. Nothing from city staff on rebuttal? Does council have any questions at this point of anyone who's spoken so far? Okay. Then, yeah.
I guess this seems like an opportunity to hear from the applicant about the alley issue that we were promised to hear about.
I was just gonna ask Glenn when he came back up. I'm confused.
It is very confusing. So I will start with, I'll start from the beginning and try to keep it short. So when we purchased this property in its entirety, it was our understanding that we were purchasing the parcel. Upon the title work being completed and some review, I was digging through previous deeds. It became very clear that maybe in the 1970s, somebody was either doing really crazy drugs or not paying attention. When this tract, so I went to the recorder's office. This block, number 17, which was long ago the livestock sale yard, when it was created and when the plat was recorded, there was not an alley recorded in block 17. There were actually no lots recorded. It was just one big block. When, as it was sold over the years, there was a gentleman who owned the whole block, and when he sold some property off, he, his verbiage and the legal description excluded Jones, the road, because he owned block 17 and half of, I believe it's 18. When he sold that chunk of land, he excluded Jones and an alleyway. So technically, that individual from like the 50s would still own that 20-foot tract of land. And then sometime in the 70s, when Mrs. Shields' property was transferred and Capution, which is the, on the other side, on the south side, they, they referenced, the legal description referenced lot numbers, which never really existed. So that's where the confusion is. I, there doesn't seem to be an alley there, and that's why when we planned the subdivision, we did it all with on our property, because it doesn't seem that it's solid. There was definitely a lot of confusing deeds out there, but.
So like, maybe there was an alley, but maybe not?
I don't think that, the original plat was not intended to have an alley, and I think that person who transferred it, I have the deed on my computer, I can't think of his name, but he, I think, intended for it, but it was kind of a, he did it poorly. Legally, he did it poorly, in his legal description, because technically, he still owns that strip of land. I don't know what he would do with it, but, yeah. So it's very muddy, and, yeah, got very mixed up in the 70s. And so we chose to just not even think about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? And we will move on to preliminary council discussion. Who'd like to begin?
I guess, I guess I would, as far as, just interesting, I mean, we're talking about inclusionary housing and how it applies to duplexes. That's not a common thing that comes up to council and, you know, I guess I just wanna throw out there that usually, usually inclusionary housing is scattered throughout. It, we, we try not to have it be designated to one particular spot in a project because of, I don't know, spreading it around equity reasoning that we've cited before. I don't have a, I don't have a problem with inclusionary housing being all, like, designated in one spot in this case, in the case of duplexes. I just thought, it was just something that was on my mind, because we don't, we don't normally come across projects like this. So, just. So, just, but I mean, I'm, I'm fine with the way it looks, other than the alleyway ambiguity. I mean, it looks, it looks pretty, pretty good.
Thanks. Anyone else?
Sure. I thought the first presentation was very well done, very well thought out. I'm glad that the planning commission got it, made, made a few changes. And I do like the idea of the inclusionary housing being first as because the rental market or the sellable market. So I like that being done first, and people can get in there that way. I thought it was very thorough the first time, and the second time, so that's probably why we didn't have very many questions. So I hope, I hope it goes well, and I like it, the first time, and I know some people weren't here for that, where you said you're going to try and make this to, you know, affordable all the way through for the people that live here, nurses, teachers, you know, the working, working people. And not that other people can't live there too, it's awesome, but the price point to where, you know, a two-income family can hopefully purchase something like this. Yeah, I think it's great, and good luck.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? If there's nothing else, I would call for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 2024-45 approving the Shaken Roos major subdivision.
Second.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Cretelli, seconded by Councilmember Nakarado, and the motion is to approve Resolution 2024-45 approving the Shaken Roos major subdivision. Further discussion?
Stevens?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cretelli?
Yes.
Nakarado?
Yes.
Fontana?
Yes.
Pappanfort?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. And that brings us to Resolution 2024-46, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Salida, Colorado, approving the memorandum of understanding between the City of Salida and Places to Age.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. A couple months ago, the City Council held a work session with the Places to Age nonprofit. Cheryl Brown Kavasik presented to you all some requests from that organization to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the City of Salida to kind of solidify what the, the process would look like for the Places to Age project, different roles that that nonprofit would play, as well as the City of Salida. So what you have in your packet is a draft, MOU, we believe it's the final draft. The, the folks from Places to Age have reviewed it, our attorneys reviewed it. It does go through the same items that we discussed at that work session. So quickly, talking about the City of Salida having a point of contact, sharing examples of requests for proposals, that Places to Age would utilize an architect and design team with expertise in this type of project, which is a senior housing project, that the City of Salida would provide letters of support for any grants that Places to Age would be applying for, that Places to Age would, would be looking for that funding and would be responsible for the execution and compliance of any and all funding and grant requirements. This does outline that Places to Age may come to the city for fee waivers or reductions in fees. It's important to note that nothing in this MOU replaces any of that process for you. So there is still the annexation, the zoning process, the subdivision process that Places to Age would be going through, and all of those requests would come to the council to be determined at the right time throughout the process. One note I did want to make on here, under fiscal impact, well, I did note that there is no fiscal impact, that's simply for the MOU. We're not committing any funding in this MOU. Any subsequent decisions to waive fees or reduce fees that the council may decide to do at a later date would obviously have a fiscal impact, so just wanted to clarify that for you all. Happy to answer any questions that you have. And there's the motion there.
Questions for Kristi.
Good job. You gave us what we asked for.
Mm-hmm. Oh, thank you. I'm trying.
It's amazing what you can do with a collaborative approach.
I know. It is. I think this is going to be a really great partnership, and so this just really solidifies what everyone's going to be working on.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 2024-46, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Salida, Colorado, approving the memorandum of understanding between the City of Salida and Places to Age.
Second.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Pappanfort, seconded by Councilmember Fontana, and the motion is to approve Resolution 2024-46, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Salida, Colorado, approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Salida and Places to Age. Further discussion? Kristi?
Cretelli?
Yes.
Fontana?
Yes.
Pappanfort?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Nakarado?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And up next is Resolution 2024-47, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Salida, Colorado consenting to the calling of an election by the Chaffee Housing Authority on November 5th, 2024, and the submission of a question to impose a sales tax within the boundaries of the authority.
Thank you, Mayor. By way of background, the City of Salida, Town of Buena Vista, and Chaffee County are the founding members of the Chaffee Housing Authority. This is a multi-jurisdictional housing authority that's overseen by the Colorado Constitution and the Colorado Revised Statutes. As a multi-jurisdictional housing authority, CHA, is held to statutory requirements and obligations pertaining to the collection and retention of tax dollars, the founding IGA requires that member jurisdictions consent to the submission of ballot issues. So as with any tax question, this question is required to go to the voters per the Taxpayer Bill of Rights. So that will take place on November 5th, 2024. One of the requirements of the IGA is that each of the jurisdictions that make up the Chaffee Housing Authority approve the ballot questions to go to the ballot. So that is the resolution that's before you. You also had in your packet the resolution from the Chaffee Housing Authority that, once assuming that each of the jurisdictions approve their individual resolutions, that the Housing Authority Board would then approve their resolution to send it on to the ballot. So you had both of those resolutions in your packet. So the CHA Board is asking voters to approve a half-cent sales tax that would equate to about $3.5 million in the first year. This does have a sunset of 12 years, so December 31st, 2036, is when this sales tax would sunset. CHA Board would be required to put it back on the ballot to continue the sales tax at that time. The ballot question notes that CHA will utilize the funds for acquisition, construction, and renovation of housing, as well as for the management and administration of deed restrictions and rental assistance programs. This is really important for the City of Salida to ensure that those programs were also being managed, along with any other physical assets that CHA may want to either construct, obtain, and manage as well. City of Salida, along with other member jurisdictions, have been providing CHA funding for the last four years. Our funding agreement expires at the end of this year. Staff within each of the jurisdictions and the CHA have been working towards a new funding agreement for, you know, 2025 and moving forward. Salida specifically has budgeted approximately $31,000 towards CHA's operation annually. We expect that the sales tax will pass, and if it does, we will then probably discontinue our funding through the general, or not general fund, the economic, the housing fund. Thank you. So that is, that is one of the, one of the fiscal impacts that we could see. We, so the CHA Board is made up of representatives from each of the member jurisdictions. Mayor Dan Shore and Corey Riggs sit as Salida's representatives on the CHA Board. CHA Board is in full support of this resolution. City staff also understands the importance of a fully funded housing authority with a multi-year revenue stream that allows the organization to provide consistent housing services and programs to our community. Again, there's no immediate fiscal impact. However, if the ballot measure passes, the city could reduce or eliminate our annual contribution, not from the general fund, from the housing fund. Happy to answer any questions you might have as well.
And also, just so everyone knows, Eric Warner's with us...
Yes.
...tonight as well, and he might have a few things he'd like to say as well. So, but we'll start with questions, and we can bring Eric up.
Why?
What's that?
Why?
What's that?
Why would Eric Warner speak?
Because he's, he's on the other, the ballot committee, and he's on the board.
The issues committee.
Oh, and the board.
And he's, he's actually on the board.
Okay.
He's the treasurer of the board. Yep. Do you have some?
I do. I have a couple of questions. Did Buena Vista and Chaffee County approve this yet, or is there, are we first?
We are first. We're the first on the, yeah. No pressure, nobody's watching. Yes. So I believe, and Eric can probably tell me, or Salty is here as well, ours was the first meeting to come up in August, and so I'm assuming that Chaffee County will be looking at it next week, I believe, is their meetings, as well as BV is the same week as well. So we're first.
Okay. And then, so if this is approved, this, this, is it practice to change any of the language after it's approved, or is this the language?
When you say this, do you mean the resolution that's in front of you?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I just wanted to make sure.
I'm just pointing at this.
Okay. Is there something in there that you want to ask about?
No, I'm just wondering if, if we, as a council, go ahead and we pass this, is it passed as written?
Yes.
Or do they practice to change it afterwards a little bit for language?
Believe the ballot language is...
Yeah, so their, their bond counsel, actually the same as our bond counsel, and she sent for my, me to look at, and I actually had updates, and she incorporated all those updates into the sales tax language. So I think, this, it's final as far as I know.
What you see should be final.
And we'll bring it up. Took time to review and edit it.
Yes.
And I think, Eric, are there any other questions before?
I had one more.
Yeah, go ahead.
And also, the attorney, Dalton Kelly's on, if you have any questions for the, he's the bond counsel for the Housing Authority.
My last question would be, is if it passes, you had said that the city would not fund the CHA at the tune of $31,000.
The council could decide not to do that.
Decide not to.
We would anticipate that if they had a strong revenue stream coming in, that, that's taxpayer money through the ballot, that our taxpayer money could go towards different projects.
Go towards something else. And if it doesn't pass, then we decide to approve money to...
Right. At this time, because we are working on our budget right now, you will see an allocation to CHA for 2025. They would not be receiving their sales tax allocation until after the first quarter of 2025, so there would still be that gap. So you'll see, I believe we have $35,000 in the budget right now for CHA for 2025. We could, you know, you could approve that, and we could, you know, determine later if the sales tax measure passes. If it doesn't pass, there'll be more in-depth conversations about CHA moving forward.
Moving forward. Okay. Well, that was, that was all of them.
All right. You're on. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you all for considering this. And, yeah, just to answer your question, yeah, we, it's theoretically possible that you all could want to change that language. That would throw a little bit of a wrench, not an unachievable one. But, yeah, assuming it comes back to the CHA Board as written, unamended by any of the three IGA members, we would approve it as is at our board meeting on August 15th, theoretically.
Eric, do you know what the lead time is where the ballot language has to be set? You know, there's a certain number of days before the election.
We have until, I believe, and Dalton is on the line, he can absolutely correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the drop dead is the 5th of September, if I'm not mistaken.
So we're closing in on it.
We're closing in on it.
Yeah, this is Dalton Kelly with Butler Snow, and so the drop dead date is September 6th. And as far as amending the language after this meeting, our position would be that the language is set as is, given that it has to go through the three member jurisdictions, and then to the CHA Board, and just timing. And so, as Nina highlighted, we've been in contact with Nina, we've been in contact with the other attorneys that represent the entities, but the position would be, the same language needs to be approved by each board. And so, given that you're first, I guess you would have the benefit of tonight, if anything were to change, you would be setting it. But in reality, whatever gets approved needs to be the same for each board, so really, it should not change between now and going to certification if approved by each entity.
And I might further add, Councilwoman Fontana, that, you know, there's a separate issue committee that is, you know, to be compliant with the FCPA, that's really going to kind of row the boat on this whole campaign. And they will certainly be giving a much more nuanced set of messages to the voter rather than what you see there in black and white. We deliberately were kind of like, gosh, how can we make this as simple and short and sweet? Because you know how it is, if voters see something a mile long, they tune out and vote no. So, anyway.
Yeah, they stop reading after a few.
Did you have anything else you wanted to...
Yeah, just, just a couple of points I wanted to mention. So on the debruising measure, you know, just in the last few days...
So you know what? We're going to have you talk on that when we get, that's the next resolution?
Okay.
So we'll, we'll stay very focused on...
On just the sales?
On this one.
Okay, we're just on the sales tax. Okay. Yeah, just, you know, thank you all. I was not able to attend the, the meeting back in June when Rob and Salty and a couple of other folks from the CHA presented to you all. But just to reiterate, you know, the, the sales tax, we, we had a, the CHA engaged a political polling entity out of the front range, Madeline Strategies, came up with a very methodical, you know, scientifically valid, demographically representative polling results, and it was very clear that the property tax would not pass. There was like, I think, 48% or 49% approval, whereas at that time, back in February, long before people have to pull the lever, there was 58% support for a, for a sales tax. So that's, you know, kind of why this method, and also, you know, we feel like this gets the tourists, you know, to have some skin in the game, to solve this problem. Everybody has to be involved, you all, the county, BV, the citizens, the tourists, the developers, everybody. That's the only way we're going to solve this. So that's kind of the rationale behind why the sales tax.
Right. Any questions?
I've got another. I just wanted to add that in reviewing the sales tax language, number two is what I asked to be added, because that's in our IGA with the Housing Authority, to make sure that that was represented, as that's important to you all, and it's important to Salida. So I just want to point out that that's what we added.
Thank you for dotting i's and crossing t's.
Yeah, I just have a, a question because we have, you know, this is the Chaffee Housing Authority, and we have a community that isn't involved in this. But maybe, maybe, will want to be sometime in the future, how does this affect that potential as far as entry into that? Would they have to then have their own ballot measure to have a sales tax? Or would they not have to have a sales tax? And how does, you know, I don't know.
Sure. They'd have to have an election in order to implement the sales tax in that community. I get, it would probably be somewhat of a negotiation between CHA and that community on, you know, membership in to CHA without that funding commitment. So I, that is, that's probably too far in the weeds for me to...
Right. Right.
To say, but they would definitely need to, the boundaries of this ballot question does not include Poncha Springs.
Right. I guess it was just like, a year from now, let's just magically, they decide to sign up, and like, would this apply to them or not? You know, I mean, as far as, so I guess you're saying they would have to, and it would be another part of their entry into being?
Not being on the CHA Board, I don't know what the negotiation would look like, but in order for them to be included in the sales tax generation, they'd have to have a vote. Does that?
Right.
Eric, do you want to?
I defer to Dalton on that, but that's absolutely would be my take, too. Like, I think you're right, in practical terms, there are some negotiations that go on, and leading up to then, okay, we're in, but we need the people to say yes. But, yeah, Dalton, any, anything else on that?
We might have a more nuanced position on that, given that if you annex into or included in the boundaries of any entity that already exists with taxation, you are subject to that taxation. For instance, if you annex into the city of Salida, you don't vote on the mill levy that already existed, or the sales tax that already existed, you are just subject to it. Do you think, you know, any inclusion, because a sales tax has different legal requirements than a property tax does? There are nuances that go on, but I think our position would be, they are subject to the sales tax, being that they would be included within the boundaries of the CHA Board, or CHA, but that, you know, if there were some negotiations or carve-outs, a sales tax can be imposed, being an excise tax at different rates. And so, there's potential there, but our position would be that they don't need to revoke this, and that by joining an entity that has authority to levy the tax, it's not a new tax, it's not a tax rate increase, they have simply joined an entity that already has the authority to levy a tax. Think of it like annexation. If you annex in, and I open a business, I pay city of Salida sales tax.
Okay. Thank you.
So, even if the residents of Poncha Springs are not voting on this question on November 5th? Because I can see, you know, if you're in, right, okay. All right, never mind.
The Colorado Mountain College inclusion that the city of Salida did, I think it was in 2019, is instructive on this point, and so I would reference back to that.
Okay. Great. Sorry. Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks. Kristi, can you bring the motion back?
I know, but, I mean.
I kind of have a more of like a general question. How are the representatives for the board chosen, for like the Salida representatives?
So, what we've done is we've, it's a community member, a member of council, so Councilmember Nakarato was the first, I think it was Councilmember Templeton first, right? And then Councilmember Nakarato, and then I took it over, a community member, and then we have as an alternate, Christie's our alternate as a member.
So, when, yeah, so, yeah, it's governed by the IGA, and the city of Salida put out a call for applications when it was time for us to reappoint a CHA Board, our board position. So, we put out a call for applications, like we do for any of the other boards and commissions that we appoint. We had, I believe Salty was the only person who applied for that position. She came in, was interviewed, and via a resolution in 2023, the city council appointed Salty and Dan as members of the CHA Board, and myself as an alternate, and our terms expire at the end of this year, so December 20, or January 2025. So, in December, we will put out another call for a community member to be appointed to the CHA, and it'll come before the council.
Okay.
And just to add, from the IGA that was established, that established a multi-jurisdictional housing authority, the county, Buena Vista and Salida each appoint two members, and then there's two members at large that are appointed by a majority of those three-member jurisdictions. So, that's how it works.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Ready for a motion?
I'm ready.
I move to approve Resolution 2024-47, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Salida, Colorado, consenting to the calling of an election by the Chaffee Housing Authority on November 5th, 2024, and the submission of a question to impose a sales tax within the boundaries of the authority.
Second. So, we have a motion from Councilmember Pappenforth, seconded by Councilmember Cretelli. The motion is to approve Resolution 2024-47, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Salida, Colorado, consenting to the calling of an election by the Chaffee Housing Authority on November 5th, 2024, and the submission of a question to impose a sales tax within the boundaries of the authority. Further discussion?
Pappenforth?
Yes.
Cretelli?
Yes.
Nakarato?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Fontana?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, and then Resolution 2024-48, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Salida, Colorado, consenting to the calling of an election by the Chaffee Housing Authority on November 5th, 2024, and the submission of a question to collect and retain authority revenue.
Wonderful. Thank you. So, again, regarding a multi-jurisdictional housing authority, as is the Chaffee Housing Authority, they are overseen by the Colorado Constitution, Colorado Revised Statute. It requires the body to have public approval to collect and retain revenue. So, it's known as the Taxpayer Bill of Rights. The city of Salida also had to ask a question of the voters to collect and retain revenue. So, receiving grants from the state by, it's called debruising, we can talk about that later, allows us to collect those funds and then expend them. So, when CHA was established a number of years ago, this was not done. So, this allowed, there's no increase in taxes for this particular question. It simply allows the CHA to collect revenue, retain it, and expend it. So, again, each of the founding jurisdictions need to approve the ballot question to be placed on the November 5th ballot. This is before you for your approval as well. Again, there's no fiscal impact for the city of Salida.
And as I recall, I think it was a year or two ago, the hospital went through issuing a Tabor refund.
Yes.
But that was very different, because that was actual taxpayer dollars, whereas this is state grant funds that were collected. So, it's really important to get the message out to the community, that if this pass, if this passes, it's not, it's not going to forego to anybody any sales taxes coming back to them, because it's grant dollars.
Correct.
Yeah. Any questions for Christie on this?
Just pretty much the same questions I had on the other one.
Sure.
About the language going forward.
Again, unless there's something that, deferring to what Dalton said, unless there's something in here that you all would like to change. And given the fact that each of the member jurisdictions' attorneys and administrators were involved in ensuring that the resolutions were written in accordance with our needs as well, I don't see any changes being made at the county or town of Buena Vista level. We've been in a lot of communication throughout this entire process.
And I had asked last time the same question, if it doesn't pass, and I think I asked this at the first time it was presented, if it doesn't pass, what happens? You don't retain, you don't get that money coming in.
Dalton, I'll let you field that one.
Good, thanks, Eric. So, the money comes in, but what the Tabor revenue limit says is basically you get a growth factor of inflation plus local growth, which is, the local growth factor has to deal with new construction, and that's all you're allowed to retain. And so, CHA would be able to retain whatever fits within that, but anything else would, under Tabor, technically have to be refunded. But as has been highlighted, the amounts that are being refunded are not really tax dollars, they're grants or contributions from other, from the member entities. So, really, that money goes back to the member entities or the state, and that's kind of the difference here between this one and the Salida hospital, is technically the remedy is the same. Tabor says you refund the money, but where that money came from is different, in that it didn't come in through like local property tax, like with the Salida hospital, it came in through grants and, you know, local government contributions. And so, in reality, that money should be refunded to those entities, and that's kind of the risk. Tabor allows you to then vote, try to vote again to retain anything that was kept above the limit, but really, unless a question like this passes, it just, CHA's budget is limited by this Tabor growth factor, which is very difficult when you're a new entity and your budget grows, you know, very differently from the early years to, you know, a couple subsequent years. And so, that's why it was highlighted that, you know, really, it would have been ideal to do this right away, but now, we're kind of in the position of trying to clean this up.
And when you think about how competitive the grant process is, and how much time and effort and went into getting these grants, it sure would be a shame to have to return it. I mean, we, the community would really lose out on that. So, that's why I think this measure is so important.
So, this measure is just for the money that we get, that comes to us from grants? This has nothing to do with, when the election comes, for the tax?
Correct. They're two separate, they're two separate questions.
So, is there, is there going to be one for, we need a resolution like this for the one that we're?
The sales tax question, that last paragraph in the sales tax question allows the collection, retention, and spending of the sales tax. And so, that's really carrying out that voter intent of, if they want CHA to be able to collect the half-said sales tax, to make sure that they can actually collect the full and spend it. And so, it's handled in a separate, it's self-contained within that question, rather than needing another one like this down the road.
Any other questions? I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 2024-48, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Salida, Colorado, consenting to the calling of an election by the Chaffee Housing Authority on November 5th, 2024, and the submission of a question to collect and retain authority revenue. Did I not say?
Second. That was, they left you hanging there.
Man, I was just like, oh, no, I read the wrong one.
So, we have a motion from Councilmember Cretelli, seconded by Councilmember Nakarato, and the motion is to approve Resolution 2024-48, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Salida, Colorado, consenting to the calling of an election by the Chaffee Housing Authority on November 5th, 2024, and the submission of a question to collect and retain authority revenue. Further discussion?
I just, I just kind of want to address the elephant in the room here. I just, I don't know that the CHA Board is in full support, from what we've seen in letters to the editor. So, I just, I don't know. I don't know what to, yeah. Like, it's hard for us to sit here and like say that we support it, and we support you guys, and you guys aren't supporting yourselves. So...
I completely understand where you're coming from on that. I've been on the CHA Board and working on the subcommittees for over a year, been on the board since January, and I think the voices you're hearing are minority voices. I have, I would not be surprised if, you know, if we had, say, nine, four participation, maybe it was a seven to two, but it'll pass. And, you know, I think part of the significance of the previous measure, you know, that you just approved, was, you know, we, young startup organization, growing pains, you know, unfortunately, you know, we thought we had a really good executive director, and it didn't work out, but the board is 100% committed, that I can guarantee you, to a more robust hiring process going forward, so much so, in fact, that we implemented this interim ED instead of just rushing to fill that spot. And there is also driven in part by, well, when we hire a long-term ED, are they managing a five or $700,000 budget, or are they managing a $4 million budget? Those are two kind of very different folks. So, yeah, I wish that in the eyes of you all and to the public, the voice was a little more clearly unified at the moment, but I think there is a strong consensus on most of the major issues we're dealing with right now, and we're resolute to move forward on this. And me personally, as a, as an at-large member, like, I take this super seriously, like, if I'm getting into somebody's pocket, I don't like when people try to get into my pocket, and, y'all have heard me say that before, but, you know, I take this responsibility extremely seriously if we're going to be taking three and a half million dollars from the taxpayer every year. But I do want to emphasize, like, I think the, unless you totally don't believe in the CHA, which I don't think really anybody out there believes that, again, there's dissenting voices, and that's, you know, America, this measure is uber-important. Like, I really, I'm not going to ask for personal support on what you just approved, but this one, I would ask that, you know, that most of the municipalities in Colorado, most of the counties, and 177 out of 178 school districts have all debruised. The thing is, it happened so long ago in the early 2000s, that most people have forgotten about it, so we're going to have to kind of refresh people's memory. But this one is really important, so I would hope, Councilwoman Martin, that, and you have a little faith in where we're going, and I'm not quitting on this.
I do, I'm just...
Fair enough.
It's something that should be talked about.
Fair enough.
And I would say also, it's, I mean, I look at us as a government entity, and there have been plenty of times when it hasn't been six, zero. We've had, you know, five ones, four twos, occasionally a tie. So, you know, part of what you do is you bring people in with different points of view, and that can lead to more robust conversations. So, yeah, go ahead.
I would just add, I think Wales's comment, I'm happy you brought it up, because it helped me kind of see a deeper, maybe deeper question around all of this, that maybe nobody will be able to answer tonight, but how would the city's role change with the previous resolution and this one? How would the city's role change should these ballot measures pass, aside from the funding that we mentioned with the last resolution? You know, does the city still have some oversight? I know we are part of the IGA. Can we rest assured that we will remain with that oversight as part of the IGA, should these pass?
I don't anticipate the IGA changing to remove any of the member jurisdictions' ability to appoint board members to that. I don't see that happening at all.
Oh, sorry, I mentioned.
No, that's okay. No, no, it's fine.
It's a multi-jurisdictional housing authority, so it was created with the, these different jurisdictions versus other housing authorities are just on their own. So, we, it's not just the IGA, we are a crucial part of the housing authority. Without the member jurisdictions, it doesn't exist. It's a statutory mechanism that is for the various jurisdictions. And if Dalton, did he just say? Okay, yeah.
Yes, I agree, and I know there's been a question in the past about not having city-appointed board members for the housing authority, and it was under different direction, so it is in the past, but it just kind of made me think about this deeper issue, and we can rest assured that we, as a governing entity, are a big part of the housing authority, and will continue to be a big part going forward.
Yes.
And then amendments to the IGA would need to go through your approval. So, when that was brought up, I'm believing Christie's heard from me, I said that there's no way I'm not going to explain to the council, and I even spoke to the prior people from the housing authority, this is a multi-jurisdictional housing authority, that that would be completely inappropriate. So...
Thank you.
I do appreciate you bringing that up as well, because we have had disagreements on this council, but we haven't really had anybody go to the press over, over an issue that they didn't like, the outcome of, I can't think of, I can't think of anybody that's done that. You, I mean, usually, you go, that was, you know, that decision didn't go my way, and then that's that. So, it is, it has been escalated. We are, you know, certainly... We are, you know, certainly that the situation as it is, is escalated because of that. So, yeah, there is, yeah, it does need to be said, for sure.
I understand what you're saying, but I guess I don't, I didn't know about the vote, I didn't know about going to the press, I must not have missed some of that, which is fine, but I am definitely in support of, you have a board for a reason. Some people will support something and some people will not, and you go with the majority and you go to the voters and let them decide.
Well, I would gladly entertain a motion if people feel we're at that point.
We have a motion.
They did that.
We have a motion in seconds.
Somebody made a motion.
This was just further discussion.
Wow, my God.
Further to the discussion.
This is what's called a senior moment.
That was confusing.
Yes, you have a question for me? Thank you, Andy.
Conflict of interest? You're safe here.
Fontana? Yes. Nakarato?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Cretelli?
Yes.
Pappenforth?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
The motion passed.
Okay. And next up, Resolution 2024... Thank you. Resolution 2024-49, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Salida, Colorado adopting an email retention policy and amending the Salida City Council handbook to include such policy. Thanks, Sarah.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, the City of Salida, many, many years ago, basically adopted the Colorado Model Municipal Records Retention Schedule for all of our records. Part of that includes emails. However, up to this point, we didn't have a specific email policy called out, so this would just remedy that fact. An email policy helps with transparency, it helps with keeping the historical records, understanding how we got to decision makings, making sure that everything is out in the open, and also determining what is historical and fiscally important, and, you know, determining what emails are just, you know, hey, there's pizza in the break room, go get some. So, that is what this does. It also amends your council handbook. And if you have any questions, please let me know.
Questions for Sarah? It's pretty straightforward to me.
I have, I have a question.
Of course you do.
I know. Yep. So, on, sorry, I read through the whole thing, and Chapter 11, where it's number seven, and maybe this is already in there, but I'm just going to bring it up again. It's number seven, number eight, number 10, and number 16. And it just kind of leaves it up to an individual, which is, is great, but where I have it at the end, sending and receiving employees must, the employee must determine if the content of the email has lasting value and whether the same should be preserved. So, it's pretty much up to the discretion of the employee when they receive and send emails, if that should go into the trash, or if that should go into one of these other storage areas.
Yeah, that's a good question. So, it's a little bit in two parts. You know, the employee most likely is the subject matter expert in whatever the communication is, so they can determine whether it has, you know, historical value to the city. Also, there is a section where it says that if the employee has questions about the, you know, the email in question, that they can go to the city administrator or the clerk's office and get extra support.
Right, that's number 16. I saw that.
Great. I'm glad it's in there. So, it's not only on the employee, they can seek out extra help, but we do, you know, think our employees are really smart and they can make these kind of decisions.
I do too.
Yeah.
And I think it's probably backed by staff with the, if they're unsure, send it somebody's way and ask another question.
Absolutely.
And that would be the same for any document, right?
Absolutely.
So, it's just emails, but then, yeah.
Yeah, any record, clerk's office are a great resource.
So, that the employees have a backup?
Exactly.
As to what to do with it? Okay, that was pretty, that was pretty straightforward.
And I guess, like, deleted things live in the ether for 30 days before being delete-deleted, right? So, there's always that, too. Just, you could always just double check, like, audit, like, all right, okay, cool, it is all about pizza. Then you can delete.
There are a lot of emails about pizza, surprisingly.
Not that surprisingly.
Lavish dinner.
Yeah, right.
Motion, anybody?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 2024, are we on 49? 49, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Salida, Colorado adopting an email retention policy and amending the Salida City Council handbook to include the policy, such policy.
Second.
So, we have a motion from Councilmember Fontana, seconded by Councilmember Stevens. The motion is to approve Resolution 2024-49, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Salida, Colorado adopting an email retention policy and amending the Salida City Council handbook to include such policy. Further discussion?
Nakarato?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Pappenforth?
Yes.
Fontana?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cretelli?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, and ordinance next, 24, 2024-13, an ordinance of the City of Salida, Colorado annexing to the City of Salida a certain tract of land in unincorporated Chaffee County known as Salida Quality Farms LLC, Meadowlark Drive Annexation. This is a first reading and the setting of a second reading and a public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. As was just stated, this item is the first reading of the ordinance, 2024-13, for the proposed Salida Quality Farms LLC Meadowlark Drive Annexation of a 43.02 acre property, plus portions of County Roads 120 and 140. It's approximately 48.98 acres total. And Salida Quality Farms LLC was represented by James Eltree and submitted a complete application to annex the property as was approved by resolution earlier. And it's described as Meadowlark subdivision exemption plat, lots one and two, located on Meadowlark Drive just west of Angel View subdivision. The Planning Commission has reviewed the petition on July 9th and has recommended approval with conditions noted in the staff report. And all of the requirements of the state statute for annexations have been followed to date, and the second reading and public hearing date is scheduled for August 20th of '24, per the recommended motion. And if you have any questions?
Questions, anybody?
Looks pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I mean, these are following statutory headlines.
Yeah.
Ready for a motion?
Yes.
I move to approve ordinance 2024-13 on first reading and set the second reading and public hearing for August 2024.
Second.
So, motion from Councilmember Pappenforth, seconded by Councilmember Cretelli, and the motion is to approve ordinance 2024-13 on first reading and set the second reading and public hearing for August 20th, 2024. Further discussion?
Pappenforth?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cretelli?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Nakarato?
Yes.
Fontana?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And you probably shouldn't go anywhere. Ordinance 2024-14, an ordinance of the City of Salida, Colorado zoning certain real property known as the Salida Quality Farms LLC Meadowlark Drive Annexation as High Density Residential R3 Zone District. This is a first reading and setting a second reading and a public hearing. Thanks.
Thank you. And again, just as was stated, this is the first reading of the ordinance, 2024-14, setting the public hearing date for the proposed zoning to R3 High Density Residential. The proposal meets the review standards for the zoning map amendments and was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. And the second reading and public hearing date is to be scheduled for August 20th, 2024, as per the recommended motion.
Questions?
Mayor, move to approve ordinance 2024-14 on first reading and set the second reading and public hearing for August 20th, 2024.
Second.
So, motion from Councilmember Cretelli, seconded by Councilmember Fontana. The motion is to approve ordinance 2024-14 on first reading and set the second reading and public hearing for August 20th, 2024. Further discussion?
Fontana?
Yes.
Nakarato?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Cretelli?
Yes.
Pappenforth?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, thanks. And then ordinance 2024-15, an ordinance of the City of Salida, Colorado annexing to the City of Salida a certain tract of land in unincorporated Chaffee County known as a cease annexation. This is a first reading and setting a second reading and public hearing. Thanks.
Lather, rinse, repeat. Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance 2024-15 on the proposed cease annexation. This is a 5.71 acre property located at 6953 County Road 105, and includes a portion of Confluence Road right of way. Ned Cease is the property owner and submitted a complete application to annex the property as was approved with the earlier resolution. A pre-annexation agreement was recorded on this property in 2016, which provided city water, city sewer services to the property and required annexation to occur once contiguity had been achieved. Planning Commission reviewed the petition and has recommended approval with conditions as noted in the staff report. All of the requirements of the state statute for annexations have been followed to date, and the second reading and public hearing date is to be scheduled for August 20th, 2024, as per the recommended motion.
Questions?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 2024-15 on the first reading and set the second reading and public hearing for August 20th, 2024.
Second. So, motion from Councilmember Stevens, seconded by Councilmember Cretelli. The motion is to approve ordinance 2024-15 on first reading and set the second reading and public hearing for August 20th, 2024. Further discussion?
Nakarato?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Pappenforth?
Yes.
Fontana?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cretelli?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And next up is ordinance 2024-16, an ordinance of the City of Salida, Colorado zoning certain real property known as a cease annexation as High Density Residential R3 Zone District. This is a first reading and setting a second reading and public hearing.
Again, as stated, this is the first reading of ordinance 2024-16 and setting the hearing date for the proposed zoning of R3 High Density Residential for the property located at 6953 County Road 105, which is known as the cease annexation property. The proposal meets the review standards for zoning map amendments and was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. The second reading and public hearing date is to be scheduled for August 20th, 2024, as per the recommended motion.
Questions?
Carolyn, I have a question. We're changing, or we're looking at changing the zoning to increase the density, but that in no way requires them to build it that way, because he says he's not going to change the property.
It would, if he changes the zoning and then brings a development plan forward, it would be reviewed to the standards we have at that time and would have to meet those dimensional requirements and any of the other code standards that are in place at the time of development.
So, I just wanted that said for the public. It's kind of a future planning tool. It doesn't make you do anything in the present.
This annexation is strictly the annexation and zoning at this point.
Sure. Thank you.
And we will be having public hearings in a couple of weeks on this.
And there'll be a lot more information presented on the 20th.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve ordinance 2024-16 on first reading and set the second reading and public hearing for August 20th, 2024.
Second.
So, motion from Councilmember Cretelli, seconded by Councilmember Pappenforth. The motion is to approve ordinance 2024-16 on first reading and set the second reading and public hearing for August 20th, 2024. Further discussion?
Stevens?
Yes.
Cretelli?
Yes.
Nakarato?
Yes.
Fontana?
Yes.
Pappenforth?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, and that takes us to council reports. Councilmember Cretelli?
Um, I don't, well, I do. I mean, I want to, I want to address what Jim Wilson had said about S Mountain. I guess I just assumed it was because they make cars so much bigger than they did in the, in the good old days, that probably is, doesn't make sense to go up there and get stuck, but I don't know. I always just assumed that, but I don't know if there was like an actual reasoning why the gate is up on S. You know, they just make...
Times are changing, huh?
Yeah, yeah, I don't know. I didn't know if that was the reasoning. I mean, it does make sense, though, that they make huge trucks that could get easily stuck up there.
Trucks are big. That is true.
So, much bigger, if you really put them side by side.
Yes.
So, I don't know, there's an actual...
Seriously not going to come up here? So, you know, David, David, so...
Sorry, I thought you were looking around for diesel.
No.
I don't know, I don't know that there's, go ahead.
Yeah, no.
I was just going to state, like, I know, certainly it could be opened up without a whole lot of struggle. I think probably the challenges are, the police department could talk about, you know, after it gets dark, maybe there's some issues and those sorts of things, and just having the staff to lock and maintain if there's a goal to keep it closed at night. I think just from a practical standpoint, yeah, two big trucks, there really isn't room to pass up there. I think it's, you know, probably a challenge if you encounter another vehicle and...
And you have to reverse, you have to back down.
I mean, in the last 10 years, there's been quite a few houses built at the bottom that weren't there 10 years ago, so certainly, I mean, I don't know, like, I guess there's risks. I'm not saying it couldn't be opened, it's just, it's probably more traffic, there's more potential for bike, ped conflicts with vehicles, now all the trails exist up there. I think there's a lot of things to think about, whether or not it's, the pros outweigh the cons, and if it's worth opening up or not.
Yeah, I just didn't know if there was an official statement to speak to it, but...
It feels like it'd be worth a conversation.
Yeah.
Yes.
Definitely.
I mean, I, you know, maybe you could do things like, you know, put restrictions in place at trucks above a certain size or tour buses or whatever, you know, whatever that goes up there, just limit it to, I don't know if that's feasible, but...
Sure, yeah, it'd be open to a conversation.
Okay, we can talk about it. We do have a onsite visit with our SIRSIA representative, who's our insurance provider, on September 19th, and we did talk to him about the road at Best Mountain, and he had concerns, so maybe after, if it's okay with you all, after the SIRSIA onsite visit, and I have an opportunity to talk to our insurance provider, I can bring it back to you if that's okay.
Hey.
Sounds reasonable.
Great.
Awesome.
Okay.
And that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fontana?
So, I went to several events this, in the last few weeks, at the Chaffee County Fair. Everything there was wonderful, everything that I went to, the fair staff, the people who maintain the fairgrounds and such, and I know that's a Chaffee County facility, they did a great job. And a lot of work goes into that, I feel like they should be recognized for that big event for our local youth, well, and some adults, because there were a lot of ranches involved in that. So, local youth, congratulations to all of that, for all of their accomplishments. That was a great thing out there. The last thing I would like to talk about is the power outages. Many people have come to me, and I've had discussions, businesses have come to me, individual people, for the power outages from on the highway, especially Methodist Mountain and that side of town, many people were affected. That includes businesses who have lost a lot of revenue on the power outages. So, when they lose revenue, the staff loses wages, the businesses can't open, it's just a trickle-down effect, and it also is a loss in revenue for the City of Salida. So, I am hoping that we can bring somebody from Excel into the public, instead of just us who are not Excel representatives, to speak on that and to give information to the public, instead of a social media forum where people are guessing and then they're saying it's the city's fault, and... the city's fault and Excel's fault, and then they're saying it's because of the electric grid that they can't, just different things are going on.
Yeah, I second that.
I, I third it.
I third it. So I was, that's, that's what it was, to have somebody who actually is, has the information to please come forward and talk to us and the city of Salida.
Okay.
I have it.
Great, thanks.
I plugged in my air conditioner last week, so that might have been.
Did you do it?
Well. I'm all summer I did it, I'm sorry.
We needed a scapegoat, thank you.
I wanted it to be cool.
Councilmember Nakarado?
I have a reminder to bring up a request that we start doing, using three hundred and sixty degree reviews for our performance evaluations for the city administrator, the clerk, and the lawyer. And I'm just looking for a second to.
Yeah, second.
Get back on board. Thanks.
Best practice. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Pappenforth?
I wanted to talk about our city website because I'm always telling people, you can find my phone number on the city website, and you can. What you are not going to find these days is my email, so let me tell you what it is. And, and that's what everybody's is, is their name at cityofsalida.com. So you can email us there. But now the new thing with websites is we're trying to get those off of there, not for you, not for our people, for bots. We don't want the bots to find us, and that's why that standard has changed. And I wanted people to understand that, that, you know, it's about criminality, just like I won't answer the phone if you call me, so you have to text me and say, hey, I'm Joey, I live in Ward Three, and I want to complain about how fast people are driving on Park, you know, then I will call you back. But if I think, you know, you come up as a robo caller, I'm not going to answer. But that information is available. You can ask city staff how to get ahold of us, and our phone numbers are there. So when we say you can reach out to us, there's a phone number there. Call us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevens?
Just one thing that I wanted to say a little earlier when we were talking about the, was that the CHA imposed tax, sales tax, that what we voted on here tonight was not to increase the sales tax, it's voted to get to an election to the people and get their vote to raise the sales tax. So I just want to make that clear that we did not raise sales tax tonight. And please.
Thank you.
Spread the word.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Martin?
I, I had a chance to go to Councilmember Nakarado's speed walk, and that was really buggy, but very informative and, yeah, thank you for putting that on. I want to second what Floyd said when you spoke for public comment. It does also help me as someone who's pretty new to Salida. I've been here for a little over three years, definitely new to council, but knowing everyone's name, I don't always know everyone, so that would be helpful. And then I don't think I have anything else.
Thanks. I just had, I wanted to pile on a little bit to Councilmember Fontana's comments regarding Excel. We know this is an issue, and I want to just give a little background. Friday night, ten thirty, my power went out, didn't come back on until nine in the morning. I had been in communication with, with Excel shortly before that, and what I heard was they instituted this new protocol in March and having to do with fire protection. And prior to the institution of the new protocol, what was happening is they would, if they noticed or detected maybe a branch had fallen on the line, a bird had flown in and an animal, they would send, and I'm not a technical person, so this is directionally correct, but it was almost like they would send this pulse up the line. It would open and reclose, and they would do it three times, and a lot of times that would clear the line. And as consumers, we wouldn't even notice it because it would be like something blinking on and off unless you just happened to be looking in that very moment. Well, in March, they changed it, so now with the fire issues, and I'm sure their attorneys were involved, what happens is they will shut, they will shut the line down until a technician goes and checks it out. So not too long ago, a dove, you know, we lost power for hours because a dove flew into the line. And they also told me that during red flag season, they have a meteorologist on staff, and if they determine that there is environmental risk factors, it could be lack of moisture in the atmosphere, et cetera, they will institute this policy. And it's really challenging because the vast majority of the business done in this community occurs between Memorial and Labor Day at the time where there's more fire danger. So I have to believe there's a way to sort this out in a less draconian fashion, and I think it's really important to bring them in. But I would also suggest that we reach out to the Public Utilities Commission because this is really impacting businesses, it's impacting residents, and we need to get a handle on this. And the reality is, we're a town of six thousand people, they're a thirty-two-plus-billion-dollar corporation. So I, I think, you know, we need to engage with the Public Utilities Commission because they will have more influence than we probably will. And it's, it's funny because as we sit up here, I think a lot of our citizens give us way more credit for the amount of power we actually wield than we actually have. And so I, I read some of these posts on social media and I'm like, yeah, I wish I had that kind of power because if I could snap my fingers, we wouldn't have these issues. But sadly, that didn't come with my.
Title.
Yeah, with my title. Bear with us, we, we know it's an issue, and I just wanted to provide a little bit more detail on this. So, thanks. Is Treasurer Gilling?
Yes.
Okay. Treasurer Gilling, do you have anything to report?
Yes, I am here, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. I would echo what everyone said about Excel. The one thing I would ask staff to do is ask them about SLA service level agreements that we should expect when we have these outages, how quickly are they dispatching their technicians, and do they have technicians available, appropriate times for this type of situation? So besides that, that's everything from the treasurer.
Thank you. From our attorney?
Yes, I just have a clarification. We were, we've been asked, the city's been asked by a few people recently to put things in the packet that are, don't relate to something on the agenda. So I just want to clarify for the public and explain, this is, these are your business meetings, and if something's on the agenda, it's appropriate for, for something to be put onto the agenda about that meeting. But if it's just a regular, you know, an issue that's not on the agenda, it's appropriate for the person to come during the three-minute public comment period or to email the city clerk, and she could email all of you. It's not appropriate to create another public forum where people just submit things that are not on the agenda. And people have asked, well, how do I get things on the agenda? You know, that comes from business items that are required by the city, either by law or by the policies that you've set, or two of you ask for something to be on agenda. I will say, if something is of public interest and a lot of people come and speak about it, that's when usually you hear that and then you direct us to put something on the agenda. So I just wanted to clarify that mostly for any, any public, because we've had a few inquiries the past few weeks.
Okay, thanks. Anything from staff?
No, thank you.
Okay. We do have an executive session, and so we'll need to, after making.
Potentially, of course.
Yeah, right.
And then we're going to go in the room.
We'll go into the tenderfoot, so.
Definitely.
Okay, okay, good.
Mr. Mayor, I move to go into executive session for the purpose of conferencing with the city attorney, for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS Section twenty-four six four oh two four B, and for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiation, developing strategy for negotiation and/or instructing negotiators under CRS Section twenty-four six four oh two four E. And the following additional details are provided for identification purposes. Development incentives requests from property owner and legal advice from the city attorney to the city council regarding proper application of the municipal code and other city requirements and regulations and other relevant confidential advice.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion from Councilmember Nakarado, seconded by Councilmember Crotelli, and the motion is to go into executive session for the purpose of conferencing with the city attorney, for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS Section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four B, and for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiation, developing strategy for negotiations and/or instructing negotiators under CRS Section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four E. And the following additional details are provided for identification purposes. Development incentives requests from property owner and legal advice from the city attorney to the city council regarding proper application of the municipal code and other city requirements and regulations and other relevant confidential advice. Further discussion?
Fontana?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Nakarado?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Pappenforth?
Yes.
Crotelli?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Does it have to be unanimous?
Not unanimous, I think it's two thirds.
Can I leave all my stuff here? I'm just going in there, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just bringing my phone so I can play.
If I sneak out during the meeting and steal your phone, I'll have an alibi.
You can have whatever you need. I tried to steal staff's phone last Saturday. I'll donate if you need one. Oh, yeah, that happens. We're moving over to the tenderfoot room. Yeah. Yeah.
You're gonna survive?
Ugh, ouch. My butt hurts from sitting.
If you could leave that on because I'm gonna give a summary. That'll help me. Do you want me to make it bigger? Maybe. Thank you.
So, I'll just repeat that last thing and then...
Would you like to read the civility invocation as well?
So what I'm hearing you say...
We're live. We're live.
Alright, very good. So for the record if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record. Seeing none, the next agenda item is just a quick summation and then a motion to adjourn.
Yes, the mayor has asked me to quickly summarize what was discussed in executive session to the extent that we could. There were two portions. One was a developer has made a request for development incentives. Council has given staff negotiating parameters. Anything final will be publicly approved and considered. And then you also receive legal advice regarding numerous legal issues that are as listed and that's obviously privileged. That's all we'll say.
Great. Okay, so with that said, all that is left would be a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night.
Good job on that second one. That was right there.
Good night everyone.
Quickest one to the ninth second.
That was good.
She's coming.
Whole night ahead of us guys.
Are you coming tomorrow?
No, because I have a house in the neighborhood.
I'll be sitting on a pretty good chair.